We have time at the end.
Well, I have the surplus property.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right. Yeah, yep.
Which one do you have?
He's got the right one because the other one totally started with something completely different.
Well, I've got discussion items starting now.
Oh, yeah.
Do this at the end if you can.
If we have time. If not, we can do it Monday.
I haven't read them, maybe it'd be nice to, you know, maybe not. Good morning, everyone. It's seven AM on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and we'll call the community of Fergus Falls City Council Committee to hold the order. Go call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of discussion this morning is a discussion on surplus property, and we'll call our chief of public safety, Kyle Bergen. Morning, chief.
Good morning, your honor, council members. Uh, the first item before you is just declaring some items as surplus property. Uh, there's a couple of vehicles that's pretty standard every year, um, that we'll be looking at trading in. I'll just note we're still having, um, some challenges trying to acquire equipment, just like everybody else in America right now and probably in the world, so. But right now, those two vehicles were, uh, declaring a surplus. The other one is our handguns. Uh, we go through this about every ten years. Um, there's about a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty-five dollars worth of parts that need to be replaced after about ten years. Um, springs, sights, uh, that type of stuff. For a new gun with the trade-in of the old guns, it's about a hundred and eighty-five dollars. Um, so rather than, and then I don't know what we would spend per gun to have our armor switch out all those parts. So it's just cost effective, uh, to trade in the old and, and purchase the new. Uh, the new guns would be purchased through the, uh, state contract holder, uh, which is Kiesler Police Supply. And so I'm just asking for approval for declaring those items surplus and, uh, moving forward with trade-ins.
Thank you, chief. We can move this to the council Monday night through motion.
I'll make that motion.
Anthony, Caroline, thank you. Anyone have questions for chief? All favor that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries to Monday night. Uh, up next is countywide multi-hazard planning again, chief Bergen.
Sure. Thank you, your honor. Um, the, uh, the county, uh, as well as the city of Fergus Falls just went through, uh, a multi-hazard mitigation, uh, planning, uh, process. Uh, on the county level, that plan is like four hundred and sixty-some pages, kind of peruse through that. Um, we do need a, uh, uh, what did we ask for? We forgot. Did we ask for a?
Resolution.
Resolution. Resolution, uh, supporting the plan, uh, through Otter Tail County. Uh, out of those four hundred and sixty-some pages, I just gave you one page, and that's really what's prevalent to the city of Fergus Falls. Um, and I'll just, there's, there's really three things on there that I'll, I'll point out. Uh, one is education and awareness, and, and the biggest thing we want right now is people to sign up for, uh, SMART nine-one-one. Now, I'll work with Lynn on getting the link, uh, to register for SMART nine-one-one, uh, on the front page of the city's website. Uh, but that's the notification system, uh, that we'd like to use. So, uh, when we talk about tornado sirens, you know, those are kind of, um, the technology of the past. We're trying to move forward to, uh, you know, smartphones, computers, that type of thing, uh, to provide notification. Um, the other thing is, um, it's an all-hazard notification. So if we have some other type of event going on or we need to send a message to the public, obviously, the SMART nine-one-one is, is the, uh, best method to do that. Uh, we have limitations with some of the other, uh, tools that we have. Um, the second item is, uh, generators. Um, so we, we do have a generator for backup power at the, at the police station. Uh, we just installed a backup generator at the fire station that last year, the year before. Um, you know, we need to be looking forward for backup power here at city hall as all of our phone systems. And for the city, uh, computer lines come through here first and then go out to the various departments, as well as our wastewater and sewage plants. And then the last thing is a storm shelter out at, uh, D Lagoon campground. Uh, I don't think we've been in compliance for some years, uh, having a shower facility at the campground. And I guess, I, I think the idea was that we could incorporate a shower slash, uh, storm shelter in the same building. So again, that's something that, um, as a city, we should be working towards, uh, some point into the future. So if there's any questions, I can certainly answer them, but otherwise, just looking for approval for the resolution, uh, supporting the all-hazard mitigation plan.
Thanks, chief. And we could accomplish that through a motion this morning to make that recommendation to the council.
I'll offer that.
I'll second.
Jim, thank you, Krista. Questions? Yes, issues that chief discussed, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, chief. Item number three is our fire chief, Ryan Muckell, uh, to talk to us about fire department township contracts. Good morning, chief.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, yeah, so we come before you this morning just looking for, uh, resolution for approval of the township fire contracts. Um, we try to keep up to date. Every five years, we go through them, uh, they're reviewed yearly, but every five years, they get sent out to the township officials to kind of get a full-on signature and approval from their board. And then we come back here, we start the process back in January, and, oh, six months, seven months later, we, I finally have a finished product in front of you. But, uh, really, uh, probably two notable things within the contract, and it doesn't change anything how we've been operating, it just cleans up the language. But on our fees, the fee for service, um, it's a contract with the township, so they pay based on our fire department budget, um, quarterly each year. But then we have a response out into those areas based on what type of call it as we follow our city fee schedule, which that's something we changed here about four years ago. Um, it's been working very well. It kind of gives an itemized bill versus just a, you know, a flat rate that actually shows what, uh, what is being utilized. So that's been a positive, we feel. Um, and then the other, uh, component was, um, oh, adding responsible party versus just a property owner. Because, you know, there's times we don't respond to a property, we respond to a roadway incident. So having that responsible party piece in there, we thought was fairly important as a, as a billable party if we, if we were needed. So, uh, so with that, just looking for, uh, recommendation of approval. And then, uh, with that, we would have the mayor and city administrator sign our city copy, and we would be, we'd be good.
Thanks, chief.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Brent. Any questions for Chief Muckell? All in favor of bringing this to the council Monday nights, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, most of you agree. Thank you, chief. All right. Item number four is a sales tax question update, and we'll call our city engineer, Andrew Brumseth. Come on, Andrew.
Good morning. Thank you, your honor, council members. Here, it's just an update this morning, so not looking for any action. But, uh, as you all know, during the two thousand twenty-one legislative session, we were given authorization to seek a local option sales tax approval from our local voters to fund a couple of projects in Fergus Falls, those being an aquatic center and then improvements at D Lagoon Park. Um, if the council decides to proceed with putting both of these projects on the ballot, that election is on November eighth of this year. Um, we will need to approve ballot language if we want to move forward between now and August. We have to get the finalized ballot language to the county auditor by August twenty-sixth, so he can prepare the ballot for, um, the November election. Just as a, as a reminder, an update recap, uh, the two projects, the D Lagoon Park Improvement Project is a five-point-two-million-dollar project. That, um, is the authorization we have. And, uh, the five-point-two million involves, uh, upgrades to the campground in line with the master plan that was completed by the city a handful of years ago. It includes sewer and water utility extensions to the campgrounds and to other areas of the park. It includes soccer and softball restroom and concession buildings, renovating the existing at the softball complex and, uh, building new, which doesn't exist today at the soccer complex, and then lighting at both baseball fields and the softball complex. So that's the five-point-two-million-dollar project. The Aquatic Center, we previously received seven-point-eight million dollars in authorization. And in this tax bill that stalled out in the legislative session this year, um, we were given an additional three million dollars. So it would have been ten-point-eight million had that passed. Um, and working with the state of Minnesota, our bond counsel and Joel Carlson, our lobbyist, who determined that there's nothing that prohibits us from asking for the ten-point-eight million dollars. So the, the advice that we have been given is go ahead with that. You don't technically have the authorization to do the additional three million until the tax bill is approved, but it's anticipated that that will happen. So, um, we're currently reaching out to members of the tax committee that we feel are likely to be there next year. And that's because they're running unopposed or, or in a very safe district and making sure they don't have any, uh, heartburn with us asking that question. But all the, all the staff and, and other various committee administrators that we discuss this with were comfortable with this approach. So, um, I provided proposed ballot language for you guys to review. This was prepared by, uh, Mary Ippe, our bond attorney. There are a few things I want to note. One, um, I'm going to ask her to include the word park after D Lagoon. It's, right now, it refers to it as the D Lagoon Improvement Project. And I think for clarity, we should add D Lagoon Park, because I think when you start talking lagoon and things like that, people may associate that with other things. So we'll do that. And then, um, I received correspondence from the League of Minnesota Cities on Monday. They're trying to come up with a way to make these things easier to understand for folks, um, that have more than one project on the ballot. Because if you, if you read this wrong, um, folks could assume that it's a one percent sales tax. That's not the case. It will be a half a percent, and then depending on if one or two or none of these projects are approved, that would determine the length and let you collect that. And so they're trying to make that, uh, more clear for voters and then figure out a way to, um, state that without complicating or, or going against the intent of the law relates to what these have to read. So that's, uh, that's the update before you. Um, barring these final potential changes from the league or working with our bond counsel, um, these are pretty much in final form. And, uh, we'll have them before you in August for approval. And then, uh, get those off to Wayne Stein at Otter Tail County and, and, uh, see what happens in November. But again, I, I just need to reiterate the fact that the city council has the final say as to, um, whether or not these projects are on the ballot and whether or not both of them are on the ballot. So, um, you guys have the ability to make those decisions here over the coming weeks.
Thank you, Andrew. Questions or comments?
Yeah, a question. Do we have an update on the projected cost of, I mean, I know we, on, on the aquatic center?
Yep. We, uh, so the request we made in the legislative session was nine-point-nine million based on feedback we had received. So we asked, uh, both in Mink and the sub consultants to design a nine-point-nine-million-dollar project.
Right.
Um, if they've done their job and the estimates are good, it's nine-point-nine million today. Um, and the authorization we'd have is up to ten-point-eight. They actually, the state is actually giving us more than we asked for, which I guess we won't argue.
Right, thanks.
Yep.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks.
Next item is an update on the RTC Phase Three, and we'll call our city engineer, Brian Uvall. Good morning, Brian.
Thank you. Good morning, your honor, members of the council. Yes, at a request of a member here, uh, they requested an update in regards to public improvement nine-five-oh-eight, which is the RTC Phase, RTC Phase Three is Preservation Project. Um, where we're at right now, the thirty percent plan review set was submitted to SHIP-O on June eighth and along with specifications on June twenty-third. At least two emails were sent to both individuals in the past two weeks asking for confirmation of receipt of these plans and specifications. Along with requests, uh, when we can expect a review comments, uh, today, we haven't received any response back from either person. Uh, then SHIP-O has the standard thirty, sixty-nine, ninety percent plan review and thirty-day corresponding thirty-day public comment period for each. Uh, we're planning on submitting the, the next sixty percent review packet to SHIP-O here in the very next week here. Um, and then once again, start the thirty-day response period for SHIP-O. So that's currently where we're at with this project, uh, probably looking at the, where it's taken right now with the review times, uh, late summer, early fall, uh, for maybe advertising for this project. So I'll open up to any questions you may have.
Thanks, Brian. Questions or comments from anyone on the council? Thank you, Brian.
Your honor.
Next item is an airport fuel system replacement project, and again, we'll call on Brian Uvall.
Thank you. Yes, uh, just like a lot of things like Kyle had mentioned too, with, uh, looking for resources for work nowadays. Uh, we're experiencing some of the same at, uh, first of all, is municipal airport. Uh, if we recall, for public improvement nine-three-four-eight, this was the airport fuel system replacement of the Jet-A and hundred low-led systems. Uh, the current design consists of replacing both these systems with an above-ground, um, systems. But based on feedback from fuel suppliers and current market pricing, we determined sufficient funds are not available to proceed with this project. In fact, funding may only permit one of the systems. And, and if that's the case, I would suggest a hundred low-led system would be replaced. However, uh, because of this summary recommended, we enhanced the bidding documents to include, uh, options for just underground tank facility systems similar to what is existing. We think, we think there could be some cost savings by doing this and with newer technology and underground systems. And talking to fuel suppliers, it seems like a very prudent option to go for. So SEH and Endpoint Solution, which is their fuel system themselves, and have, we've developed a design amendment, uh, for proceeding in this manner. Uh, by exception of this, we would incorporate, once again, the above-ground fuel systems and also options to replace the below, uh, below-ground systems as are. Um, if acceptable, uh, we, we're still working on this project right now, but we're anticipating opening bids late July, uh, early August. Once all costs are known, we'll present it to the city council for pending award once we get to that point. So at this time, I'm requesting to accept SEH's professional services agreement for alternate bid option design in an amount of eighteen-thousand-two-hundred dollars.
Thank you, Brian. And we can make a motion to bring this to the council Monday night?
I'll make that motion. I got a comment.
Yes, Scott.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Go ahead, Scott.
Just a question for you, Brian. It seems like it was not so long ago that we approved this, uh, plan to replace the fuel systems. And the conversation at that time was to go with above-ground systems, and now this is for a below-ground system. And I was wondering what the rationale was, what the, at the time, it seemed like we wanted to get rid of the underground system, and now we're going back to that. So what's, what's different? What have I missing?
Um, other than the costs, and then when you do an above-ground system, uh, there's certain setbacks that we have to meet. And in this case, I think it's about a hundred fifty feet within the above-ground system, uh, from our AED building, arrival, departure. And that significantly increases our distance for our new fuel lines because we're trying to, we're trying to reuse some of the existing equipment, like the fuel cabinet dispenser area. And if we feel that there's savings, if we go up and below ground, and, uh, we'll be that much closer to those dispensers that we're trying to reuse as well. Um, but yeah, that was the rationale. But we also with that, with the above-ground, it was encumbering the parking lot quite a bit too as well. So we're just looking totally on a cost basis right now. Uh, we're looking with the underground systems, obviously, you have, uh, a lot of NPCA reporting and everything as well. But, uh, with today's systems and everything too, we don't, and talking to the supplier, uh, they don't, they don't deem that as a issue right now.
And you expect that we could come back at a later date to do the second fuel system?
We're going to try to maximize by doing both systems, and if it happens to be both below ground. Um, but once again, it only permits one system. We're obviously going to try to make accommodations so we can install the second system to accommodate as well. The six-hundred-thousand dollars a state encumbered just does not seem to be going too far with this project and many projects nowadays.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion to recommend to the council to accept this professional services agreement. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Next item on the agenda is an update on food truck ordinance. We'll call on our community development manager, Clara Beck. Morning, Clara.
Good morning. Thank you. Yes, um, city staff has been working on an update to our food truck ordinance, as you may know, for the last couple of weeks. Uh, this is the latest draft that we worked up based on feedback we had initially gotten from both council and from business owners in the area. So where, where we're going to go from here is if you agree with these changes, we will take these back to the business community, get some further feedback, and then have a new draft that we run through with Rolf that will come back to you for review before going to its readings. So I will just go through quickly what the proposed changes are. First off, um, we did remove a definition. The word commissary only appeared in definition and did not appear anywhere else in the chapter related to food trucks. So we removed that just for clarity. The other, um, definitions will remain as they are. Then, um, in the section on restrictions on vending activities, uh, staff is recommending that we remove the section that prohibits vending on Lincoln Avenue between Oak Street and Freiburg Avenue. Um, that was kind of the feedback we were getting is that maybe that wasn't as much of a concern for business owners as it was when this was first drafted. So we are recommending we remove that. And I did check in with the school district about the language related to food trucks within two hundred feet of schools, and they do not have an issue with its removal. They no longer have open lunch periods, and they don't, don't see a problem with, um, having food trucks nearby if they choose to park there. Um, we are also suggesting that we remove a section which restricts the operations of food trucks on private property. Um, I think what we in practice say is that if you are a food truck, you are operating on private property, that's between you and the, the property owner. So the property owner could say, hey, you have to stop operating at a certain time, but the city's not going to say ten-thirty PM is your cutoff. So we will keep language that restricts the operation of, um, of, uh, food trucks to ten-thirty in, on public and city-owned property, but not on private property.
So Clara, on that, like, so for fish factor, this won't affect them, then?
No, unless they're private property that they're on.
Right, okay.
Makes some sort of a change, but no, this would not affect them. And we are adding some language that says all food trucks shall meet all requirements needed to obtain licenses from the local health authority, which in Fergus Falls would be Otter Tail County. They do have a, um, section of their government that does food truck licensing and inspections. And also add in the state of Minnesota, because again, there is further licensing that happens for food trucks through the state of Minnesota. Any questions on this section? Okay. Um, we are also removing under location or placement, the section that restricts the, uh, restricts a food truck from hooking up to, um, public utilities, since we do now have public utilities that are available for food trucks to use. So we simply remove that language just to clean things up. Um, we are also adding a final point to that section that says state law limits food trucks from parking in one spot for more than twenty-one consecutive days. Just for clarity between city rules, county rules, state rules, just saying, hey, this is part of state law. You cannot stay somewhere for more than twenty-one days. And I, since we have already talked about fish factor, I will say they do move their food truck fairly regularly, so they would, I do not see them being in danger of this twenty-one day rule. So, uh, there's also a section on dimensions. Um, again, the city is not licensing food trucks at this point. We're also not inspecting them. That goes through the county and the state. So we are recommending that we remove the section on dimensions, since we really don't have a mechanism to be checking on those. Um, signs and appurtenances, I don't know if I pronounced that correctly, but that's fine. Um, this one is maybe a little bit more tricky. We are going to work with Rolf on some language there, but we are removing the language that requires the signage be attached to the vehicle or the trailer. And instead, what we will add is language that says that signage can be placed outside of the vehicle. But what we want to make sure of is that we're not, um, restricting the passage of pedestrians or saying that it's okay to put a sign like in the city right away or in the middle of a street, which common sense would tell you is, is not the best option, but just to keep ourselves safe, we'll add something in there that does clarify that. Um, we also are removing language that restricts generator noise levels to seventy decibels, because again, um, the city doesn't have a way to check that for people. And, uh, I think we haven't gotten any complaints from people who are using food trucks or enjoying food trucks that, hey, their generator is way too loud. So we'll just remove that language to make it a little bit easier. Um, we are still leaving language that says that they should screen their generator, just so it's maybe a little bit safer and a little bit more pleasant.
There is a, there is actually an MPCA restriction on noise, so maybe that would be.
We could note that.
Maybe that would be a notation that must comply with Minnesota Public, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency.
That's a great, great point. Um, we also removed D, which was restricting sound decibels beyond the unit, which means like if you have a boombox in your cupcake truck, that you would not be able to play music because it would be heard outside. So we removed that. Um, again, we can talk to Rolf about if there's some sort of language that says like, don't do anything too loud. But we figured a starting point would be to remove that restriction and then go from there. Um, and then E was the section that said that food trucks would have to bring their own, um, trash, trash receptacles. In practice, what we have seen from food trucks when they are operational is that they are, are generally not bringing their own trash receptacles. They're either on a public property that has one available nearby, or they're on a private property where the property owner is tending to provide them a trash receptacle. So what we did instead is change the language to say that, um, say simply that the vending site must be cleaned of all litter and garbage generated by the unit and that they would leave the site clean when they leave. And then just finally, those are all the changes that we made there. Um, at present, we do not have a licensing process. Uh, we do have a park permit that we have been asking food trucks use when they are going to be setting up somewhere on city property. Um, so what we are suggesting is that the city move ahead with a licensure process. Um, we wouldn't be inspecting the vehicles or anything like that, but what we would be saying is if you plan to operate in the city of Fergus Falls, we would like to know that you are doing so, and we would like to ensure that if you are hooking up to city utilities, that you are paying something for those. So we figured a flat fee of a hundred dollars for a season, or if somebody's coming in from out of town, doesn't want a full season pass, uh, they could do a three-day license for fifty dollars. We figured that would cover some of those costs that might be incurred for hooking up to city utilities, any sort of use of trash receptacles, et cetera. Um, and it would also just give us an option to know who is operating where. Um, since we have made this change, and as we've seen use of the pavilion building and the park space start to take off, um, one question that has arisen is how do we know when someone is operating somewhere in town? So if you remember when, um, Mr. Connolly was here with us a couple of weeks ago to talk about the food truck ordinance, he had mentioned, um, and I can't remember if he said this out louder, if this was in his letter, but he thought it would be nice if a food truck, if they finish an event somewhere and then they still have food left over. If they could just simply move locations, go somewhere else, maybe hook up to city utilities and continue vending elsewhere. Right now, that wouldn't be an option because we have this permit process that says we need to know where you are at, you know, where you're operating for however long, twelve hours. Um, so what, what I think I am suggesting is that we keep some sort of a permitting process or some sort of process in place where we would know if somebody is going to be operating on city property. I'm not sure what that looks like yet, and I'm kind of looking for feedback. Would that be a permit? Would that simply be some sort of a notification to city staff that, hey, I finished this event, now I'm going to be moving over to city property just so we're aware who's vending and, um, what time period they are there? So those are my thoughts. What is your feedback?
My initial reaction seems very workable to, to allow, to know someone's operating within the city, just like an ice cream truck. Like, we don't have to limit them to one particular area. If we know where they're operating, if that's what we want to know, I don't know why they couldn't go to the other side of town, different park and, and sell. different park and sell food, but that's, I don't see why that wouldn't be workable.
That's good enough for me then. So we'll just leave it at going down this licensure route for having an annual and then like a smaller pass. Does that sound reasonable?
And I just also just want to generally comment, like thanks for the work on this. It seems reasonable and it seems streamlined and the feedback of the ones who are actually operating, I think is helpful and beneficial. So thanks for the work on this.
I think should this, obviously, what's the timetable on this? Because I'm just thinking, obviously, I mean, have we charged people kind of this far for kind of permits? You know, and then if we enacted this, say for example, we approved this on the 1st of August, and somebody's paid us this much money, are we gonna do some sort of like prorata thing?
Yeah, we can certainly talk about doing some sort of prorated.
People that have paid, if, you know, if people have paid us $100, then we give them the rest of the year free type of thing?
Yep, and I should explain when, with the permit that we do currently have, it's you only are paying, it's a $15 fee only if you're connecting to city utilities. So if you are going and operating somewhere and you're not connecting to city utilities, you're just filling out the paperwork, you're not actually paying a fee. But we do have record of everyone who has paid, so we can easily work something out.
Yeah, or do some sort of prorata for the balance of the year.
And I think our suggestion would be that we start the licensing process in January.
Right, okay.
So that we give people a little heads up. Summer events happen, we're busy with food trucks and people with city utilities, but we, it's gonna get, you know, as we move closer to the fall, it's gonna slow down. So I think we give this up, put it into our fee schedule and start in January.
Yep, well, that would work.
Caroline?
So the, I don't know how often the food trucks like want to use like city garbage or whatever. Is that something that would be in the permit that they get? Like, you know, a three-day permit for someone that's coming in from out of town for something? Are garbage cans ever requested by food trucks or not really?
No, not at this point that we've seen.
Okay.
I don't know.
No.
Public works has.
Okay.
Scott?
Couple of things, and the definitions, it calls out vehicles or fully contained trailers. At our opening, we had a unit that was a tent style. And so you might need to incorporate some language in there that allows for other types of units that are still under this ordinance that aren't on wheels.
That's a really good point.
For what it's worth. You mentioned that Otter Tail County has a licensing program, and I believe that as a part of that and the health inspector stuff, they've got inspectors that come around. If we're gonna be issuing permits, who is it then that checks or polices it? Or does it, we just hope that everybody checks in and does?
That they've gotten the proper licensing? So when we do, when we enact our licensing process, part of the paperwork would be please provide us with copies of the licensure and permit information that you've received from both the county and the state. So we would just have that on file.
I think that's all right. Further down in your signs and appurtenances, specifically says signs may not project above the unit. Every unit you see has signs projecting above the unit. So I don't think that sentence should be there. That doesn't, that's not practical. And then as far as the generators, many times the generators will be placed away from the vehicle intentionally to get the sound away from the vehicle. And the way this is written is that it has to be attached or part of the trailer or something. So you might want to check the language on that as well.
Okay.
And the last comment I'd have is on the penalty part. For somebody violating some of this, it says, you know, $1,000 fine, 90 days in jail. I don't think that's practical or likely, and I don't know that we would even. It seems like it's kind of overkill to even state it that way. You might have loss of license for a year, but I don't think we're gonna put anybody in jail for 90 days if they happen to park in the wrong spot.
We can work through that with Rolf as well. I think that's just the standard section that gets plugged in there for penalties. So we can certainly make that a little bit more reasonable.
I think that, because if people read through this and they see that, it's like, well, these guys don't, they're just unreasonable and they want to throw the whole thing out. So if it states something that makes sense and is reasonable, that's fine. But when you come to something like that, that makes it sound like we're gonna be out there marching around with, that's kind of serious, that does a little bit too much. Thanks.
You could have on there up to $1,000.
It says up to.
For multiple violations.
We'll work with Rolf on the language. And this is gonna, this is a work in progress. You're gonna, like you said, you're gonna be bringing this back to the business community and then back to the council, so. Great, thanks for those comments. Scott, anyone else have any comments on the proposed changes? All right, thank you Clara.
Thank you Clara.
Next item is a discussion on edible cannabinoids. And again, Clara Beck.
Yes, thank you. So I will just start by saying that we're not, we're not here this morning to have any kind of unideological discussion. We're also not here to delve into the nuance of the legislation that has been passed. But we do have somebody in the audience who is willing to answer questions about some of those nuances, should we choose to go down that road and ask those questions. Ultimately, what we are here to do today is to respond to changes in the business landscape that we're seeing statewide and just ensure that the city is thinking about these changes and taking them into account as we look at our city zoning. So as I noted in my memo, there have been changes legislatively at the state level regarding cannabinoids. And the city feels that it is, based on feedback that we've already gotten from the business community, that we should do some looking at what kind of restrictions we may be putting in place. At present, what we do with alcohol and tobacco is restrict where those items can be sold within our zoning code. So what city staff is suggesting at this point is while we work through some zoning changes at the planning commission level, based on you telling the planning commission to look at those items, is to place a pause on new businesses or businesses that are existing within 500 feet of a school to please hold off on selling some of these items that are now available until we can work through some of those zoning updates. So the request before you is to have the planning commission take a look at some of these legislative changes, see how they fit into our city zoning code, and while they are doing that, to enact a moratorium on sales of CBD items.
Thanks Clara.
Specific to the new legislation.
And just to clarify that, we do have a moratorium on alcohol and cigarettes within these same, or it's in the zone, is it zoning with alcohol and tobacco? So this would just be a short-term moratorium that matches that zoning well, the proper zoning processes followed? Is that, would that be a way to describe it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Captain Clara, Clara mentioned 500 feet of schools, but she didn't mention the residential piece.
Yes. Yep, we also restrict the sale of alcohol and tobacco products from residential zones. So we are also asking for the same thing here with edible cannabinoids is to not have any home businesses set up at this time that might also be selling those products.
And again, that's in the moratorium, that would then be further looked at in zoning. So we have a longer-term approach, if you will, that matches.
I suppose I got a couple of questions. Obviously, I'm not into moratoriums. I feel obviously that's kind of, it passes a kind of the message that we're being restrictive. But I mean, if somebody wishes to start selling this product from their home, wouldn't they have to come to the city to get, you know, obviously, you know, some sort of variance to do that?
No, that would be considered, since these would be food items, they would likely need to go through, I believe, what is a county or state process to be a cottage industry to be able to provide food items to people.
And if we don't make, Your Honor, if we don't make any changes to our zoning code, it would be allowed anywhere in the city limits without, without any zoning activity needed. If we make changes to the zoning code that mirrors where alcohol or tobacco could be sold, then in a residential zone, it will either spell out in the zoning code that it's not allowed, and then there's no mechanism to do it, or we could list it as a conditional use, which means people could come, ask the city to get a conditional use permit to operate within a zone, and the city can put parameters around it. That's where we can say you can operate, you know, from 8:00 to 8:00 PM or whatever that looks like. So if we don't do anything, they can sell anywhere in the city limits based on the legislation that was passed.
But is this legislation about selling it or manufacturing it?
Selling.
Selling it.
It's just purely about selling it? I don't think it is.
What we're doing at the city level is purely about selling.
I think, I mean, I.
The city is doing, through the zoning ordinance, is about, is about selling.
The zoning ordinance with, there already being tobacco and alcohol. Right now, with the MACE codes and things like that, the sales, we can already sell these items for, since 2018. But it falls under the tobacco sales right now. So, and we have no issue with that being the case. But what we're a little concerned about is adding verbiage that's gonna add additional red tape to the already charged. regulations and industry, and everybody's just kind of scared of all the buzzwords and things like that. I mean, it took us a month and a half to even open a bank account, just checking it up. You wanna put money in your bank, but just add along this card number. The laxative law is forward completing regulations that could be just regulated at the state level. And maybe a clarification that it would be temporarily falls under the tobacco and alcohol sales, however that the zoning goes.
So to be clear, Your Honor, we're not talking about any existing or additional regulation. We're talking about zoning, which is specifically as a city council, you're saying these are the areas of town that you would permit this to happen. You have the ability to restrict, you know, this activity in certain areas of town. We're not trying to dictate anything related to the statute or change any other regulations. It's simply where are they allowed to operate?
Which is why at the beginning I said we're not trying to get into the nuances of the legislation. What we're looking at is for the planning commission to have discussions about what this would look like per our zoning code.
Sure. So I think it's important, obviously, we're gonna have a, I'm anticipating we'll have a robust conversation about this on Monday night, but it would be nice between now and then. Emily and Jasmine, would you, if you would, just, yeah, just, please come to the lectern.
I'm Emily McEwen, the founder and owner of Sugar High Cannabis Consulting and Dispensary, and we're slated to open our doors August 1st. So I'm gonna try to really keep this organized. It's, okay, so, and I know that you don't want to go into the nuances of this, but we have to a little bit right now, because it's just necessary. Also, I just get really emblazoned and passionate, so I'm gonna try to scale back on that, but.
Your Honor, just for clarification's sake, the process here, we need to go to the planning commission. So I don't, I appreciate the comments here, but I don't know if this is the right venue to make the comments, because the planning.
Can I have maybe three minutes to talk about some things?
Yes.
To just share some.
And then Andrew, then you can make comments wrapped up. So I just want to make sure the council understands the actual process we're going, that's the important thing.
That's why I'm here too.
Goes to the planning commission, then it comes back to the council.
Sure.
So you guys will hear this. I don't know if today's the day, but if you want to do it today.
So you know, I, we're not here, I'm not here to tell you about what cannabinoids are, what they do, why we should fundamentally have access to them, no. I want to state that I, fundamentally speaking, I have no problem with a zoning ordinance imposed. I am in favor of regulating and controlling this new emerging industry, selfishly for my protection, okay? Every product that we're discussing here, I know in the original memo I saw, I got ahold of and mentioned specifically Delta 8 and Delta 9 THC. And I just want to remind everybody, and I'll, you know, that these are all hemp-derived cannabinoids, and that's federally regulated and legal and has been since the 2018 Farm Bill. Delta 8 THC products have already been in circulation in our community at various locations since probably 2019. And this new, because I feel like this conversation was birthed from this new legalization of THC that everybody's been talking about, and I just want a minute to explain what that means. That legislation that Governor Walz signed did not legalize anything that hasn't already been legal since 2019, or 2018, the federal hemp farm bill, okay? What it did regulate is now in Minnesota, we can now manufacture edibles and beverages with Delta 9 THC that's hemp-derived. That provides protection, it provides accountability and safety for both the manufacturer and the consumer. So as a business owner, what that means for me is that come August 1st, if I would like to start manufacturing edibles or beverages that contain Delta 9 THC only, I have to do that within the compliance of the milligram caps, you know, and those parameters that they've set forth, which we do intend to do at some point. But until then, you know, like I said, I don't have an issue with the zoning. My business is already in a, it's in a business zone, and I know that we can push forward. I tend to agree with Anthony in the overall moratorium feel. And again, I don't, I don't need to worry about that. I'm not necessarily opposed to that. But I am thinking about big picture and the reality of the trajectory of this industry, and I do see it growing on a local level. Someone's just gotta start, you know, and so I, with Jasmine, my business partner, I mean, she and I both agree that as little extra unnecessary red tape as, would be, would be a lot easier for us, you know, in an industry that is fully legal. I think it goes without saying, and I'll save some of this passion for later on at a different time, but I care very much about responsible use of cannabis. Cannabis does not equal marijuana. Marijuana's not legal in Minnesota, and none of the products that anybody does currently or plans to come in and sell are going to be marijuana-derived. It's important to educate and provide awareness and advocacy, which I personally, at my business, absolutely do. I have paid for my 10 employees to obtain a certification for cannabis caregiving. I've reached out to the PD and let them know that I self-imposed a 21 and over only rule, because I don't want younger kids coming in and abusing some of these products, you know? And so I just really think it's important to consider all of these things and to remember, or to consider the implications of imposing more regulation and unnecessary regulation and red tape like Jasmine mentioned. I mean, I could hardly find a company to provide me merchant services. And we're talking a legal industry federally and statewide. So I think that's really just what I wanted to go over without going too into that new legislation. We are still able to carry and sell Delta 8, any other hemp-derived cannabinoid with no milligram cap. It just pertains to the manufacturing and retail sale and branding of those products, if that makes sense. So with that, I just, I just want to say thank you for letting me talk. Obviously, I'm passionate about it. I don't mean to sound defensive, but I'll stay engaged going forward with all opportunities as well. Thank you.
Thank you Emily. Yeah, I think there is a lot of information in the media. It is a lot to take in for the average person, right? So I mean, like, we're just going through the process. We want to make sure that our community, you know, we're getting questions from the public, law enforcement, making sure that as any changes take place, that, you know, we're prepared and we're doing what's right for our community. So we certainly don't want to restrict legal business, and we're just going through that process. So let's, thank you Emily for your thoughtful words. And yeah, Justin?
Just maybe one question I have is, it didn't, or maybe I missed it, but it didn't state how long the moratorium is recommended. And I understand, obviously with, and we know this as a council, our ordinances are out of date, right? They're not up to speed with 2022. And so I know we don't like putting a moratorium on things, but I think our stuff isn't able to handle some of the changes, and so we just need to protect ourselves and our citizens, and not saying that we're trying to set up more rules. But if this were to move forward, what would be the timeframe we would anticipate a moratorium? Is it a 90-day? Is it?
Yeah, I don't think it has to be long, because there's, we're not talking about additional regulation here. The planning commission conversation should be simple. It's talking about what zones would this activity be allowed in. We're not talking about any details related to the legislation, any additional regulation, red tape. I agree with everything you've said about red tape. We're only looking at, if, in general, and maybe the planning commission and council discussion comes back and says, we're not gonna make any restriction, and this is good to go lift the moratorium, fine. But that's a discussion that hasn't happened, and I think it needs to happen.
And I think an important argument could be made that, that as you go, as the planning commission discusses that, if 500, within 500 feet, if we don't allow the sale of tobacco or alcohol, it would seem reasonable that we either remove that or we include this.
Or also, because the tobacco sales permit is currently the only permit I require to carry to sell the. carry to sell the products we carry.
Right.
That's because it's so new and not, and infantile, you know? This legislation is literally being drafted as we speak, every week, every month, because we're adopting new language, we're adopting new legislation, and we're building this right now. So we have an opportunity to do it right, you know, and cohesively.
But I guess our perspective We're trapped currently, it falls under the tobacco blanket. And Minnesota's MACE codes finally came out addressing cannabinoids for 2022, set of MACE codes. You know, they do that every five years, I think. So right now, we're, Minnesota's operating on 2017's MACE codes, and I'm not sure what their delay is as far as, like, when they start adopting the 2022 MACE codes. But for now, it, what we're doing and selling all falls under tobacco sales. So we're already covered. That's why it's kind of my point of, it doesn't necessarily, it's not a huge rush to address this, because right now it is covered. The way that it's currently written, it's falls under tobacco sales. And then once new MACE codes come in, I'm sure that they're going to come out with new licensure and regulations that might be a little bit easier to incorporate into your zoning.
It doesn't fall under tobacco within our zone. That's the challenge of the city. We have to address it unless we want to allow it everywhere today. The other thing I'll mention is, we would have the ability, we've talked about this internally, and I think you might like the answer I have, we would have the ability to license this at the local level, or to put a fee in place, or to have some level of oversight. We've decided we're not recommending that. We do already do it through the tobacco license that we have, which was a local decision we made. We're not looking to do anything extra. We don't need to get involved any more than saying, hey, council and planning commission, we should take a look and see, do you really want this being sold out of neighborhoods or next to schools? That's really the conversation. So I appreciate everything that's been said today. Talked about that internally. If the council feels differently, and you want us to collect a fee and put a license in place, we have the ability to do that. But I don't think it's necessary. I think that industry regulations are going to guide how this plays out. But I think it's prudent that we have some level of discussion on what the implications are related to zoning. And that's, that's where I'm asking the conversation to start and stop. And Clara may feel differently than that, I don't know. But that's, that's all the discussion we've had internally.
We have no issue with that. We just want, we just want it to be carefully thought over verbiage.
And what I really don't want to happen, in theory, is the city staff or council to induct and order, create and induct an ordinance that pertains to the unnecessary and moot definitions and picky and choosy about which cannabinoids can be this and that and that. It's just all hemp, and it's all federally legal and protected. So I find it unnecessary, the idea of that becoming a thing. And I'm a little nervous about that because it would be unnecessary. So I just want it to be heard about that as well, you know?
Sure, thanks, Emily. I think understandably, there's some questions and confusion, but it sounds like, generally speaking, we're heading in a direction that's
I think we should also, in the zoning, then we should address the manufacturing. You're talking about just sales.
That's true.
Manufacturing is actually more, you know, I would think, you know, as our, as much of an issue. Because if you
Can I add to that, Anthony? It's something I forgot to say, because with the new legislation pertaining to manufacturing, the language states that anybody can be licensed or get the permit to become the manufacturer. The stipulations are that you have to set a sample from every batch you make to a third-party lab testing facility before you can package and brand and retail sell. But as far as I read, all it states right now is that that has to be done in a licensed kitchen. And I don't know if that's by the Department of Health or the Department of Ag, I'm not sure on that. But I think it's a good idea to address that and figure out where in the city. I just want to voice that I agree with that as well. I don't find that unreasonable, to dictate where, in what zones we can have manufacturing sites or kitchens.
So would someone like to move that we move this discussion to Monday night, and then just we continue this discussion?
I'll make that.
Second, we have a motion. Go ahead, Scott.
I just wanted to make the comment that I think it's appropriate for us to have this under the same kind of a category zoning-wise as alcohol and tobacco. And beyond that, I don't think these details really are going to make a lot of difference. But as Anthony said, too, I think it ought to include manufacturing. So whether it's manufacturing, sales, how it falls into zoning code, seems very appropriate to me that it would just be in the same category, essentially, as alcohol and tobacco.
I would agree with that. Scott, any other conversation, we'll move this discussion to Monday night. I'm in favor of that motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same. Sign that motion, case. Thank you, Emily and Jasmine, for being here. We do have one more item, hopefully we can take care of this morning. We received letters from property owners at 203 and 205 West Lincoln Avenue, having some concerns about the new apron and curb in the rear of those buildings. Andrew?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. Real quickly here, we've had a few conversations with business owners along the alleyway there of the Phase 1 project area. There's been some concern with customers and tenants tripping over the curb. And I know previously, we had a conversation with the council and about whether or not we wanted to do additional curb cuts. At the time, the decision was made to put in the final wear coat to the final surface of the parking lot, because we did have that gap that you could see, and then see how things went. And within the first couple of weeks of even having the parking lot finished, that rollover curb still remains an issue for folks, primarily in the area of the Viking and Flower Mill. So if the council's on board, we will go forward with doing a curb cut that's kind of centrally located. Their, their two doors are real close together. I think it's a logical place to have that curb cut, cut out, which then would hopefully, in theory, allow easier passage for folks that are in walkers or, you know, have a harder time navigating that curb, which is, which is the issue that we saw, so.
It is a pretty good lift there. I have noticed it.
Yeah. So that's, that's the conversation.
I'm one of those old people.
I wasn't going to say it, but we're all thinking it.
Is, I mean, I think, obviously, with the letters, there's, there's concerns there in that area. Is there any concerns in the rest of the lot? I'm just thinking, if we're going to do it, do we, do we have any other issues to address down the way for the other businesses?
Isn't there, isn't there a pretty decent curb cut further down?
By Uncle Eddie's and by Seers.
That seems to, seems to take care of that issue a little further to the west.
Just this one would feel be sufficient.
I think with these two, we cover a pretty good portion of walk-in traffic and/or close enough to other businesses, they can, you know, choose to wisely navigate.
Do we, do we mark those? I mean, is it necessary? Do people, obviously, local people, but I mean, just, I don't know. I mean, not to make anything more confusing, but is there something on the ground that we can put this people on? I don't know. I don't
I refer to you.
I would say we just install one. We have a pretty good location. What's that, Sir Bolson?
Trust that city staff can figure that out. City engineers got a sneeze rolled up early this morning. It's going to be a good day. All right. Is that agreeable to the council move for?
Have they consent to approve that curb cut?
Yeah.
And make that motion.
Make a motion. We got a second. Jim, I'm in favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Have a great day. Ryan?